Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to our work session. We will go ahead and we will jump right into our discussion tonight. Tonight, we are working with -- our work session is on human capital. And I thank each of you for attending. And I will start with you, Dr. Register, so you can make your introductions.
Thank you very much. We've been looking forward to this for a long time. This department, it is a standing conversation about how long this department has been organized. And I say 30 days, and they keep telling me it's not that long. But at any rate, we're -- human capital is -- I'm trying to be light with this because, and positive, because I am really excited about changes that are being made in such an important part of our work and the organization of our district. And that's the formation of a human capital division, not the old HR work that's been there, you know, that's the traditional approach to managing human capital. We have about 10,000 human capitals in our school system that are employees in our school system. And we think that there's so much room for improvement in the way we recruit and retain and develop and manage all those people. I'm excited to get the presentation tonight. Susan Thompson, I'm going to turn it over to you, and I'll let you introduce your staff who are here, most of whom are new.
And before we get started, if you would please remember to speak into the mics. It drives these guys on the cameras crazy when they can't hear you.
Yeah, you'll have to pass that around a little bit.
And we have the one functioning mic right here.
Nice.
So we'll pass it around. And as we get into the presentation, one of us will speak for a longer amount of time. But in the introductions, I think I'm going to let each person introduce themselves. And I'm -- maybe we will. I'm Susan Thompson. I'm the Chief Human Capital Officer.
Is it on?
I don't think it's on.
Is it on?
No.
They tested that many times. Remote starting.
I hate when people are staring at a microphone. Sorry, Rod.
Oh, it's dead.
Good. It's not my fault.
Are you telling me the battery went dead?
It did.
Nice.
Before we got started, that's how much power we have. Taking all that energy out of there. Anyway, if we talk real loud, is that helpful or not?
No.
No, we'll wait. I heard that. Just start down with Sheila.
I'm Shereen Douglas, Director of Talent Acquisition.
And I'm Katie Corr, I'm the Executive Director of Talent Strategy.
Hi, I'm Sheila Armstrong, and I'm the Director of Compensation Strategy.
And I'm Craig Ott, Human Capital Operations.
And I'm Susan Thompson. You cannot work a microphone. And I'm the Chief Human Capital Officer. And we're excited about coming together with this. And as Dr. Register said, we've been working fast and furiously since we went from January 22nd from human relations to human capital. To bring to you where we are in the process, we think we've made some good strides, and we know we have a lot more to go, so we want to share that with you. So let's see if I can handle a microphone and a clicker at the same time. We have a couple of goals that we have this session. I talked with Cheryl Mays on the phone. She put out an email to you all. Some of you sent back some questions. We've been doing internal feedback, and I will tell you, on January 22nd, when the announcement was made, I've asked IT for more mailbox room. I don't have it. And so we've gotten a lot of feedback and things about human capital. But we're going to try and address the questions that you all had and focus in. We know that with human capital, one piece that is of interest to everybody is that around talent. So we'll spend most of our presentation looking at talent tonight, but know that we have a lot more functions than that. So two of our goals, and I'm going to have to do this, is to explain to you the move from HR to human capital. And then we want to talk to you about our human capital strategy, what we have, and how it fits into the overall district strategy and how that plays out. We're going to share with you who is an educator in MNPS, some data that we have from there. And let you know that we are mining the data, and that's what we've been doing since we've become human capital, is taking the data that we have and looking at it and telling you what it's telling us we need to do. So what we're going to do tonight is tell you where we are. We're going to tell you what has changed so far. We're going to tell you what needs to change as far as we see, and we'll get feedback from you all as well. And we'll tell you where we are in the process. So we're not a done deal, but we're in transition and moving. But we want you to know that we know what we need to do, and we're addressing those things. So as we go from HR to HC, I want you to know that a lot of the work that has been driving this decision comes through our transformational leadership group of asset. They've been meeting for several years and making recommendations. And we've taken those recommendations very seriously when we started looking at going from a human resources to a human capital division. Last week, we had the National Advisory Panel here, as you well know. Many of you were there and were able to meet. We were very fortunate that we were able to take the work that we've done so far around human capital and share with Carrie Leana and Andy Hargreaves, who've done a lot of work in the field around this, to say, here's what our thinking is, here's what our data's telling us, and here's the direction that we're thinking we're going. Here's our theory of action, theory of change so far. Give us some feedback. It was very validating. They gave us some good things to think about, and we brought that back, and we'll continue to look at that. They gave us their contact information to call on them at any point in time. So I was -- we were very thankful and very happy to be able to have that contact and help us making sure our work is what it's supposed to be about. So as we go from that evolution from human resources, there used to be the old personnel departments, which I do remember, thank you very much. And then they became human resources, and they added a few more functions to them. And now we're really looking at human capital systems. And you can see that it really is going, in the past, from transactional processes, things that we do, into being more transformational. And it really broadens the scope of the work. So our next slide is really going to help us show what we're doing here as far as that is concerned. Who we are tells you how that scope has broadened. We're going away from, not away from, we are including all those operational pieces. Those are still critically important. But we're also adding under that umbrella of human capital, that whole idea around talent strategy. So a skeletal organizational chart that you'll see for us right now, that's sort of our organizing mechanism, is what you see on the screen right there. On the left-hand side, you see the idea behind talent strategy. We're really focusing in on the talent that we're bringing in, both the acquisition and the evaluation, looking at that whole lifespan of the leaders and the educators, staff members that are coming into our district. And we can go into more explanation of that if you want. You can see on the far right, Strategic Operations. Those are your typical HR functions that we had in the past. Those have got to be there. They impact every single one of them. We're looking at streamlining those processes, and we'll talk more about that later. Sitting in the middle of all that is the idea of strategic compensation. It plays a critical role in all of the pieces that we do. It's about getting the attention of new talent, bringing new talent in. It is what helps retain a new talent. It plays into our benefits side, our strategic operations side. So strategic compensation sits in the middle and touches a little bit of everything that we do within our department. You can also see with the Chief Human Capital Officer, as I come out and come over to this piece, I maintain that leadership and professional development role, because that's about developing the people that we have currently. What are we providing for them as we onboard them, as they are here? How do we develop not only the teachers, how do we develop and grow our leaders as well, and looking at those pipelines? We've had -- so we can talk more about that later if you want to as well. But that also is coming in under the human capital umbrella. So it's really broadening the scope of our work. I will tell you, in our reorganization, as we look at this and we go from a larger group into basically five chief officers, as you can see, some of the pieces that I put up there, it is really increasing the amount of collaboration that's going on through all the divisions in the district. Because as it becomes leaner and we take on a larger scope, it becomes much more imperative that we all talk to each other, we're all on the same page, and we work very closely. We work very closely with all of them, but especially with leadership and learning. It's a very hand-in-hand operation and collaboration that we're working on. Chief Academic Officer and I talk frequently, pretty much daily, that or with their department and with the other departments as well, since it touches each and every piece, so that we are going in the same direction. Anyway, so I want to make that point. So as we talk about our human capital strategy, I told you that we were really going to talk more about the talent strategy piece. So we'll look at our theory of change here, and this is what we truly believe. If we recognize and value, if MNPS recognizes values and increases highly effective educators and staff, that student achievement will improve. We truly believe that. We embrace that. And we know that we are the first impression that everybody has of MNPS. It is critical, we know, that the moment somebody knocks on the front door of MNPS, that they're coming to human capital first. And that we are looking to see what we have to provide for them, that we get the best talent that we can absolutely find, that every interaction that they have with us is of the highest quality, that it exemplifies what we expect to see every single day in every single one of our classrooms, in every single one of our schools, in everything that we do. So I will also tell you that we're working together as a staff to make sure that not only does everybody else understand what our theory of change is, that we, each and every one of us, can address it and can exemplify that. When we had the race to the top, there were five key areas that MNPS was focusing on, and those are the five key areas there. As we look at those, we think number three really speaks to human capital. The others are very important. The top two, we think if we do number three well, building that pipeline of great teachers and leaders, that we will be focusing on student achievement. We will get student achievement by having those great teachers and leaders in place. And then we want all of our students to be able to graduate college if they're ready, and that'll be able to happen if we do our job in getting those great teachers and leaders there. Our theory of action looks like this. We know that to be able to do those things, that we need to have a culture of support, and we need to have efficient systems in human capital. Those are foundational pieces. That culture of support and those efficient systems support the rest of the actions that we're about. We are about attracting and selecting, about evaluating and developing, and about retaining and growing people that come in to work with us, everybody, all human capital here in the district. That's our theory of action. So when we look at that, there are two foundational strategies. The first one is building that culture that's focused on quality performance. Did I hear something buzz? Okay, I'm just hearing things.
That's an buzzing up here.
No. Okay. Was it this? Was it the microphone?
It's a timer. That's a timer.
It's a timer. I'm done, okay. When we talk about that culture focused on quality performance, it's like I said, we are the first impression. We want it to be of the highest quality, that we exemplify the absolute best that we can possibly be. It's the best place to pursue a career, it's the best place to educate our children, and we know that it all begins with us. We also know that to be able to have that high-quality performance, that we need to have efficient systems, not only for attracting and onboarding and retaining effective educators and staff, that these two things are very critical. They support everything that we do in human capital. They help us to accomplish our goals. We have three transformational strategies that we will go into more detail. But three of our strategies are to attract the best teachers and leaders, make data-informed decisions regarding talent. We are mining our data. We're finding interesting things. It's telling us great things that we need to focus on. We're finding areas that we need to find out. We don't have the data, we need to get the data. So you know, whenever you start looking at data, you always have more questions after you've looked at it than you do have answers. But know that that's what's driving our decisions, is we're looking at the hard numbers. We're not getting the kind of information that we're asking questions about. We're putting things in place so that we can get that. And then our other one is about how do we retain those best teachers and those leaders? All of that's based on data.
Can you give a quick example of data you don't have that you like?
Retention data. We don't have great retention data that shows why our teachers are leaving. We kind of know when they're leaving roughly, but we don't have any data that's showing, yet, that's showing why. So that's one piece. We...
So that's an exit survey?
Yes. Exactly. So we have a lot of questions around the evaluation data, which we'll get to in a second. We have a bunch of data that we'll be presenting to you in just a few minutes.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
There's another one here today, also. Can you give me an example? You said, you made the statement that you're finding a lot of data, and you're using that data to drive your decisions. Can you give me an example of some data that you discovered and how that affected a particular decision?
So you'll see this in just a few minutes, but we, the THEC, the Tennessee Higher Education Commission, released a report on the preparation programs in Tennessee. And that report showed which programs have had statistically significant effects, which the graduates have had statistically significant effects on student gains. And we've taken a look, a really deep dive into those data, and tried to figure out which of our preparation institutions that are feeding to us, the majority of our educators, are really developing those types of educators and those types of people we need in our buildings. And so we're strategically changing the way we recruit to really go after those different programs. That's just one example, but we have several. We'll show you.
And to add to that, not only is it where we're going to recruit, we're also reaching out and making partnerships and speaking with some of those universities and their programs, both their leadership programs and their teacher residency programs. So all of that is happening. Where am I now? Okay. So when we start looking at building that structure, building a culture of quality, we know that culture is the DNA of any organization. It is the backbone. It is what you must pay attention to. It's how you do business. And we want to shift from a reactive to a more proactive focus. We want to focus on talent. We want to focus on the services that we provide. We want to provide that culture of recruiting does not lie in the human capital department or division alone, that each and every one of us in MNPS, each and every one of you sitting around that table, is a recruiter for MNPS, that we are out seeking at all times the highest quality, the most effective teachers, and bringing them into the organization. I believe that was on the 22nd. The following week, we had a principals' meeting, and I had them each look at each other and say, you are all recruiters for MNPS. You're all out there looking for. And so it's not just a function of one division, it's a function of each and every one of us here. And it's just the way we're going to do business. It's how it's going to be here. It's going to be about a quality place to come and work and have our children educated. So as we go into our next strategy about streamlining processes, I'm going to let Craig talk about that. Can we hit the next slide?
Yeah. Okay, so we're moving from this transactional processes, which also talks about electronic data. And right now, we have a file room, not quite as large as this file room, but we do have a large file room. We're going to digitize all that information. It's about moving information from point A to point B. So that's workflow, that's process management, that's data management. We've already come to the board, we've already got some approval to move forward with those projects, and so that's going to happen. It's part of going green, basically. And that's what part of the operations side is going to be focused on along with this transformation process. If you could hit the next one.
So we're going to talk a little bit more about that, but I want to emphasize how important that is. Once we become green, once our data is electronically housed, it can then work interface with our data warehouse. And the total performance data instead of achievement data and all those things that really, we are prohibited from doing a lot of that now because our personnel files are on paper. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yeah. So you think about every time that data is entered into a different system, there's always subject to errors or problems with that. So we're trying to minimize that. We're trying to get down to the number of keystrokes are minimal in the transference of data from point A to point B. So again, it flows into our data warehouse, it flows into our payroll system seamlessly. It integrates with other timekeeping systems that we're hoping to get. So it's all part of a massive effort, in other words, to integrate all of our data about all of our employees, so we can go and just look at it on our screens rather than having to mine for that data.
Will there be an inclusion in the digitization of the files in the building level? So not just your files that are here at Central Office, but there's another file for teachers that are in the building, is that all? We'll have one file so that somebody can get a complete look.
You know, that's critical, and we see that. There are going to be many buckets that we also, you know, you have to keep medical information separated from the personnel file or injury-on-duty data separated from the personnel file, too. So we'll have many different buckets, but they'll all come back to a central point. So we will have access to that.
And let's do this, let them get through their presentation, and then we can ask questions at the end. So if you guys will write down your questions, that way we can kind of get through this and then move forward.
Okay. Ready?
Okay. So part of all this data, then, is we're going to create a dashboard for the board and the business, basically, to monitor what's going on within human capital. And within that, we'll have the retention data that you're looking for. We'll have some evaluation data about how many evaluations have been completed and what those evaluation scores are at. We're going to create a dashboard, and this is just a sample dashboard, but include a lot of different metrics that help the organization to improve and advance. How many recruits that we have currently out there? What are our highest needs currently as far as our recruiting our talent? How many people have gone through the Teacher Leadership Institute? So all of that data will be combined into a single dashboard.
Okay, so first two strategies around culture and streamlining our processes. I'm going to walk through three strategies that are really at the heart of the talent strategy work that Shereen and I specifically are really working on. And those are first around how we're attracting our educators, and then I'll walk through what we're doing around evaluation, and I'll give you a lot of feedback on our evaluation data. And then we'll finish with our final strategy around what we're going to do around retaining our educators. And even though I do appreciate holding questions, I'm going to be going through a lot of slides and charts, so please feel free, if something's not clear, to ask me to stop or explain what the chart is. So our work around talent acquisition or talent recruitment really began strategically when the district brought on my colleague, Shereen Douglas. And that happened about a year and a half ago. Previously, we'd had recruitment efforts, but they weren't as strategic as we really needed them to be. And Shereen has really reinvented the way we recruit in this district. She's driven her strategies solely by data and looking at where we're getting our great educators. She's using an entirely new approach, which I would love for her to talk about as well in a bit, if we have other questions about that, to really think about where we can go to find the educators that are doing the kind of work that we need them to be doing in MNPS schools. One thing she also looked at was the ethnicities of our students and our educator population. You all know that the student population is roughly 45% African-American, 16% Latino, 34% white. But our educator population does not reflect that level of diversity, particularly around the virtual void of Latino educators in our district. So that's an area that we're really thinking about and trying to specifically target Hispanic-serving institutions, institutions that have larger percentages of Hispanic candidates. And we're also doing the same, of course, around African-American and other diverse institutions as well. So let's take a look at where we get our educators in any given year. Last year, we hired 634 new hires, and this is our, majority of our feeder institutions. Starting on the left, that's Teach for America, and then the TNTP New Teacher Fellows Program. We have contracts with both of those organizations, and they provide, you know, roughly a little over 10% of our, I think it's around 10% of our new hires. Then if you go across, you know, TSU, MTSU, and then Lipscomb-Trebeko-Vanderbilt-Belmont, and then the UT Knoxville is the last one. Of course, there are many organizations, in many institutions that feed candidates to us. These are just the ones that have higher numbers of candidates. I want to call attention to two organizations, Teacher America and UT Knoxville. As I mentioned earlier to Ms. Shepherd's comment around using data, the THEC study, the Tennessee Higher Education Commission study, showed that several preparation programs in the state were producing candidates who made statistically significant gains with their students in comparison to other beginning educators. And those two that we feed into MNPS are Teach for America and UT Knoxville. It was a great finding for us, simply because we do recruit at UT Knoxville, but probably not to the numbers that we need to be doing. And we also just want to see what they're doing in their program that is producing such significant gains. Same with Teach for America. Shereen just spent yesterday morning actually diving deep into the Teach for America selection process and learning more about the organization. And of course, our colleague on the board has been helpful in that area as well. The report also noted that some organizations are not producing candidates or producing candidates that are making statistically negative or not producing statistically positive results with their students. In terms of our institutions, MTSU was the one that was highlighted. However, we have talked with MTSU, they've revamped their, because of this report card, or in part because of this report card, they're really revamping their entire program, and they're now implementing something called Ready to Teach, which is a nationally-recognized teacher preparation program. And we're really involved, we're really excited about seeing where that's going to go in the future, and we're really happy that they were so responsive to the data that was not showing significantly strong results. So basically, our strategy around teacher recruitment revolves around three main things. I mentioned thinking strategically about our top-tier or top-performing preparation programs and really going after them in a very aggressive way. We're also branding the district and branding working in the district, and that work was begun under Shereen's leadership as well, to develop a new kind of a logo motto, calling all role models. We've unveiled that and rolled that out in the district. You all may have seen some of that work that Shereen did last year. And we've just started a Twitter feed, please follow us, @MMPTalent. And we're redoing our website to make the website as appealing as possible to new hires. Right now, you have to click on several pages before you can even get to the application, those kind of things that we just want to streamline, as Craig was mentioning earlier. So moving on to our next big area of strategy in terms of human capital is making data-informed decisions around talent. We have talked about this for some time in our district, but we haven't been very strategic about it. And we also haven't had the evaluation data that we do now that we can really start reflecting on. The first thing I wanted to do is just kind of remind everybody about the team evaluation model. Most of you all, I'm sure, recognize the three major components of the model. This is the statewide model that we have adopted in Metro. 50% of the model is observation scores, and there's four observations per educator, or six if you're a new educator. 35% is student growth, and that is the individual teacher affect data for those teachers who are in tested subjects and grades, or the school-wide data for those who are not in tested subjects and grades. And then 15% is another achievement measure that each teacher with his... And then 15% is another achievement measure that each teacher with his or her principal can select from a menu of options that is approved by the state. So, let's take a look at where we're falling with our evaluation model. This is from the first year of implementation, 2010, 2011, 2012, and these are the composite scores. So, it's all three components in one composite, trending very high, obviously. About half of our educators are receiving a four or a five as their composite metric, and only 3.22 percentage are receiving a one. I want to say that that is a very small number of ones.
Is that out of six or seven thousand educators?
Yeah, 6,600 roughly. I think it's around a little less than 200 educators who received a one as their average observation, as their average composite. So, this is very telling and very interesting, and we start thinking about how we can get a little bit more normal distribution of our composites, but this does include state Tvos data, and so we want to take a little bit more deeper look into what we can directly control as of today, which are our observation scores. So, this, this chart actually shows what just the isolated observation score averages are in our district, and again, trending pretty high. 50% of our educators are received, roughly 50% are receiving a four. 70 to 72% are receiving a four or a five in terms of the observation. So, this is the principal observing four times or so in the classroom. That tiny number, 37, I think that was 22 educators, received an average of one on their observations across all four observations. So, clearly, we're not normal at all, and we're definitely trending high on our observations. This makes us really think about what can we do to make sure that our principals are implementing the observations with fidelity, make sure that the norming between principals and between their observations is consistent so that they're observing the same thing and they're marking the same thing on their rubric from, from principal to principal so that a two means the same thing across the board. We're looking very closely at how we're training individual principals, and we're taking a look much deeper into the data to see what the correlations are between individual schools, where there, where there might be really some, some large ranges between what teachers are getting on Tvos and what they're getting on their observations, and we're doing a deep dive with those educators as well, as is the state. In terms of the growth scores, this is the school-wide Tvos data, so this is for the educators who do not, who are not in tested subjects and grades. Interesting that the majority of educators receive either a one or a five. And again, these are the educators who do not have tested subjects and grades, that they're not in tested subjects and grades. This is all state, state testing. With teachers who do, who are in tested subjects and grades, we see a little bit more equity of distribution, still trending high on, on the fives, but obviously, threes are at least coming up there a little bit. This was an interesting finding for us because this is the additional metric that the teachers can select with their principals. The state has produced a menu of options that individual teachers can choose, from which they can choose, and that, this is, 50% of our educators are receiving a five on this particular metric. And so, we'd like to take a look at what is that metric that they're selecting? What are, is it something that is as rigorous as maybe school-wide value-added is? And so, we're taking a deep look at those. I will say that the majority of fives, I mean, the majority of people in our district selected five metrics, and those are DIBELS, this school graduation rate, the ninth grade retention rate and the, or the ninth grade, yeah, the ninth grade retention rate, and the TCAP math and reading scores. And so, we'll just want to take a look and see what those numbers are showing us and see if they're, if that is as rigorous as maybe some other metrics that people are selecting. Okay, so, we do have some work to do. We want to start looking at ways that we can better norm our principals. However, we also want to take a look at what the state is doing, and so we can see where we fall in relationship to the state. Anytime you roll out something like this, you're going to have a significant implementation year effect, and so that's what we're, we're really recognizing that. So, the state numbers, this is the, the distribution between Tvos, teachers with Tvos individual data and their observations, and you'll see, obviously, what you're looking for is for the two columns to be roughly similar. They shouldn't be identical, but they should be roughly the same. And the red and the blue. And so, you'll see that on statewide data, they're also, the observations are also trending very high. This is our data in MMPS, the exact same representation, and I'm just going to show you again, like, we're really very close to what the state is doing. So, that is not necess, that doesn't mean that we're doing great things. It just means that we're probably all trending a little high in this implementation year, and we all need to now take a look at what we can do to, to norm the observations better.
No, no, we're doing great things.
Oh, we are?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We absolutely are.
Absolutely.
Good point. Okay, so, what does that mean for our whole strategy? Like I said, we're going to be working very closely with LNL to make sure our principals are normed and re-normed regularly around the observation rubric. We also want to take a deep look at the quality of feedback that our principals are providing to their teachers on the evaluation system, and so we'll be evaluating our previous programs that we've put in place, SOCAL and some other things that you've probably talked about, and taking a look at what the teachers are saying around the feedback and the quality of feedback they're receiving, because the evaluation is a very important tool, but it's only as, as good as the feedback that it's providing and the changes that it's making in our classrooms. So, the final strategy that we'll walk through is around retention of our great teachers and leaders. We have some retention data. We don't have near as much as we want right now, so that, that's an area that we really know that we need to start tracking better. All right, in terms of years of experience, we're all over the place, really. We have, we have about 13% who are close to retirement, but we have a pretty significant, you know, 40, 42% who are within their first five years in the classroom. We are recognizing that, that we need to do a better job retaining our, our high-quality educators in this district. And the way that we are going about that in this year, this first year of our work is through thinking deeply about differentiated roles and responsibilities and offering multiple career opportunities and pathways for our educators. So, those educators who are really hitting it out of the park and, and really showing excellent leadership skills, we want to give them specific opportunities and compensation to take on those roles and responsibilities. Retention efforts across the country are ambiguous at best in terms of what's been effective and what hasn't, and a lot of it lies with culture and leadership in the building, and so we're looking deeply at how we can make sure that the culture of the entire building and the leadership at the helm is really representing the kind of school and the kind of atmosphere that we want for our kids. So, I'm going to turn it back to Susan, and then we will take any questions.
So, we've roughed out a timeline, looking at what we have ahead of us, and you can see there on the foundational strategies, especially with culture, that's ongoing. We're always addressing that and looking at that. I will tell you that tomorrow, the Human Capital Division is meeting over at Martin. Now, we're doing a late start because we know that there are substitutes that need to be filled, and we've given fair warning to everyone that, and we do have emergency numbers for them to contact. We're going to start at 10 o'clock, and we're really going to dive into, as a division, what does this mean? So that we want every single person in the Human Capital Division to be on the same page and have that understanding, and to build that culture that we, that we want to exemplify to everyone else. So, as we said, then streamline processes. We're looking at that right now and hope to have that in place sooner than later. The, the attracting the great talent, you can see where that starts, and, and our branding has already begun in, in looking at that, and strategic recruitment never stops. When we look at, look at our developing of great talent, that never stops either, but if you look at the quality of data, we talked about the dashboards and those types of things that are coming on board. Our SchoolNet process that we have with our professional development, we want all of those pieces to be able to talk to each other. As Craig said, there'll be some things that are locked down, like medical records and things like that, but what we're looking at is a system where any teacher can go in, any employee can go in, put in their information and look at their records, anybody on a campus, you know, I mean, the principal of the campus can go in and look at, at the data pertaining to them. We can look at it from the human capital system so that, so that it's all in one place and it's, and we have it all loaded in there that we need. The whole principal development piece, working very hand in hand with leadership and learning, meeting with, I've been meeting as well as Alan and Jay with the network leads and pushing out the network lead concept. I'm meeting with the executive leads another week to look at our rubric around our TLI rubric, around our perform, which we've used in our TLI, but it's around our leadership performance strategies, our strategic transformational leadership strategy, and getting metrics around that to work with our principals. And that is ongoing as well. And then in retaining great talent with our strategic compensation, and part of what Sheila has been doing is really looking at job functions and roles and all the titles and getting those things in line so that it, it makes sense to everybody. Everybody knows what it's, if it is a particular job title, that it has these functions that go along with it, and, and this is the compensation that goes along with that. The career pathways, we, we are going to continue to develop those, and that's, that's under our purview as well in conjunction with and collaboration with LNL as well in, in developing some of those possibilities. One thing that struck us as we were listening to Carrie Leana and Andy Hargraves is, we've always thought of principals as the instructional leaders, and they really pushed us to think that the instructional leaders are in the classrooms. And so, when you look at the number of teachers that we have that are mid-career, we know that at mid-career, they have the highest commitment to the field, and they have the highest competency. They're the most capable and, and doing the job, and to tap into that, those are our strong instructional leaders, and so our building-level leaders are our transformational leaders that, that take care of those things. So, looking at that. And then our whole new teacher induction program, really putting in place, knowing what is critical if you're going to be a teacher in MMPS or a leader in MMPS. What are some core understandings, core learnings, core training that we expect you to know? What kinds of common language do we have? So, we're, we're really pulling that together as well. So, that's what we've done in the last 26 days. And we know we have plenty more to do, so, any questions?
And we're busy, I guess, huh? I'm sure there are lots of questions, so, if you have questions, raise your hands. All right, let's start with Ms. Brogan, work our way around here.
I was just wondering, on the slide that you showed where we're, that we have certain schools that are cranking out the most effective teachers, how are we measuring that effectiveness? Is that through the?
Tvos.
Oh, Tvos, okay.
Only Tvos, so there's obviously other things, other factors that we need to take into account when thinking about our preparation institutions, but, but that is the measure that THEC used.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Anderson?
Sure. I've got a handful of questions. A handful of questions. One that's probably quickly took time to the, I think, last comment you made, you said you'd been thinking about school leaders as instructional leaders. Is that correct?
I said, you know, it has moved to building leaders from being building managers to instructional leaders, and we're really looking now at them as being transformational leaders.
Building managers to instructional leaders to transformational. What is a transformational leader?
Transformational leader, we have an entire strategy around that. It's about, you choose to do leadership. You set clear and compelling direction. You are able to transform teaching and learning. You're able to manage accountability systems. There are five key performance strands that we use. We have a whole set of measures underneath that. We've developed rubrics to, to help look at that. It's how we describe leadership.
And I guess where I'm going with that, it's a different skill set perhaps than a lot of the school leaders that we have who've been school leaders for maybe 20 years. Maybe they, they came up, they were, they were teachers, they, they studied, they have a master's in education, they did something, but is it, is it a different skill set that we are perhaps focusing on from new school leaders than maybe we did five years ago?
Yes, I would say so.
And have our, are we trying, I guess, attempting to retrain our existing school leaders?
Yes.
Is that, is that a few weeks in a summer program? Is it months? It's months of ongoing continuing education?
It's ongoing, and I would say, it was just a year ago that we really sat down with Mike Rutherford and some other people to start thinking about that whole leadership strategy and how we develop leaders and, and looking at what is required in this day and age to be a leader. And so, we developed that entire strategy, and so through our, I think it was, now this was before I was on board, but I was there for that first meeting, I might add. I believe it was in the Summer Principal Leadership Institute that was, we first rolled out that, that strategy. Everything that's done in, in the Teacher Leadership Institute, everything that's done in our Principal Leadership Institute is set in that context. Our agendas are set in that context. We highlight different pieces of those so that they understand what it is that we're bringing to them or that they have asked for. This is where it fits. This is what you're learning. This is fits under this performance strand. This is going to help you to get to this point. So, that's what we're setting the context and the framework for all the things that we do with them. We're hearing the language more and more, which means it's taking, it's, it's understanding. In working with the network leads, that is really driving their work, that whole idea of transformation. That's where a lot of the autonomy is coming from in that direction. So, yes.
So, I guess I'm curious. I'm curious how it's, and, and, you know, we were asked to send a bunch of questions in advance.
I agree.
And so, I didn't know if you guys planned to kind of, and I don't know who will send questions in, if you plan to just kind of address those or email us all back. You know, some of the question that I had around school leaders is, so how are we, how are we evaluating the success of, of our training programs? And, you know, to what extent, if, if we're not successful in moving somebody up, what's our timeline for saying, you know, the skill sets changed? Right, I face that in my, my day job. You know what? You just, the skill sets changed, I can find something else for you to do, or, you know, maybe, maybe need to look around. And, and so I'm just wondering how, how the implementation's going?
Okay.
And how the evaluations are going? These are, you know, our principals are year-to-year employees. What's our timeline to say we're going to have all of our principals as highly effective leaders? And who, kind of, whose job is that?
You've asked me lots of questions, so I'm going to give you the answer in lots of different ways. It's going to answer all those questions. Let me think how I start. You talked about several different things. One thing is, it really was kind of going around standards about how we present and develop. You need to know that there's, when you, you adopted them, the professional learning standards, and there's a strong piece in there about leadership. We brought in Pat Roy from Learning Forward, and we worked with 35 people in, across the district in all divisions, and this is before the reorganization, that have the primary responsibility of professional learning for their division, to understand what the standards are and what that looks like. A lot of that's about adult learning theory and those types of things, but it's really about continuous improvement and transformation. As we roll out SchoolNet, our professional development, which will be a part of our professional development, there will be evaluation pieces in there for everything that we do, and a part of that evaluation will address those standards. Are we meeting those, and what was the point behind that? As we move with our, not only is that professional learning standards embedded in what we do with leadership development, so is all of those leadership strands and all those metrics, and that will be designed in there. Right now, we get feedback on the Principal Leadership Institute. It's evaluated by Danenberg Institute. They take every one of our agendas, they take it apart, and as I said, those agendas are built around those leadership strands, and they give a specific feedback on that so that we see that. There is the principal's evaluation that is conducted by our LNL group and our executive principals that, that go out and work with them, and they are responsible for doing that. We do have information that there's been, in the last three years, 50% of our high school principal leadership has changed. A lot of it's been based, or has been based on those evaluation forms. We're looking at We're looking at the metrics for the others, and we're really pushing that forward and saying what's expected. As we move into the network leadership, network lead model, we're also looking at them having more feet on the ground, closer to the kind of work that each other does, based on those kinds of metrics, and giving that kind of feedback, and looking at, and then I think you've also had shared with you the performance framework with the results. It's all tied together. So it's not perfect yet, but we think we're getting closer to that. I don't know if you ever get to perfect, but getting better so that we have better information to make those kinds of decisions. So that's where we're moving to. Now, did I hit all of your questions?
Timeline.
Timeline.
So when do we think, you know, and I don't, you didn't give us tonight any information really on the distribution of our school leaders and how effective you think they are? You know, are we, are 70% of our principals highly effective? Is it 50%? That's a, that seems to be a small number of people with a lot of focus that we could hopefully try to move really quickly. So I'm wondering how quickly, right, and they touch all of our, they touch all of our teachers. How quickly do we think that we can move these folks up? And who owns that process? Who's directly accountable for moving those people up to being highly, you know?
Leadership and learning evaluates.
Who's the person?
Chief Academic Officer, it's Jay Steele.
So Jay, it's Jay's responsibility to make sure all the principals are highly effective?
Jay and I work together.
Okay.
Jay and I work together. He's responsible for evaluation. He and I work together on the development process and helping to do that together. And.
Timeline.
A timeline.
Timeline.
We're constantly working on it. We have the performance strands, and we're putting those together as we go to.
12 months, 24 months?
12.
12 months.
We're looking at, within this next year to put that perform, I'm looking to you to verify the performance framework together, that they're going to be, and that's looking at our network, and that's what we're looking at to hold them accountable for, so.
And so a part of that accountability structure is how their staff, right, performs, correct? As far as growth.
The teacher effectiveness will absolutely have an impact on the student results, absolutely.
And so we get that data in November, so you're really, really, if that's a big part of it between now and November.
It is.
And really, it's really almost now in the end of the year.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
That we're saying, because that's, we've got a couple of months to make these people really, really effective. Is that right? Because the data that we get in November is the data that's based on this year and the test that'll happen this spring.
And we have ongoing, we have ongoing formative assessments going on, and we're getting that data all the time and looking, and so our student achievement data is looking pretty good as far as what we've been expecting to see. But every time that goes into the system, we're looking at that. We have that around the table all the time, looking at our data. Leadership and learning is working with them, our network leads are working with them, and we're getting feedback all the time on what else they need to help support them. So the formalized, putting the framework into place, we are formalizing that right now so that when we select and expand that network, we have that to be the criteria for moving forward with that.
You never, you never get done, you never get done with leadership development. We're talking about 150 principals. We're talking about a whole cadre of assistant principals. We're talking about teacher leaders. And there's not a, there's not a point in time when we can say, okay, we're all perfect. We're all great leaders. People retire. People are changed in their jobs. Susan just said, half of the high school principals in this district are different from three years ago. And so it's a developmental process. Let me go back three or four years and say that leadership capacity in this district was very shallow.
Yes.
The first thing I did when I came here was change a high school principal. Week two. So, you know, you have to look at it as a developmental process, and you never finish with that. What we do is we get better as a group as we go along. And what we've got is, I think, a leadership development program that is becoming outstanding. Our principal training program, our Scuffle Observation and Coaching Lab is in its third year. Every school administrator in this district has gone through a part of that training program, and we take it, and we take it to another level. So, you know, and so you measure the effectiveness of principals by the growth chart. Are their scores getting better? Are they retaining teachers better? What do their, what do their tell surveys say? What do the teachers say about the leadership characteristics of the principals? So it's just, you know, I think it's incorrect to say, okay, here's our timeline, here's when it's going to be done. What we have to do is recognize that it's an ongoing process that never ends, in my opinion. And so with professional development of teachers. I mean, that's what, that's what we're about here, continuous improvement, and I think that's the way we have to look at it.
And that's, that's where I struggle to say, I agree with you that it's a continuous learning process, it's continuous improvement, but at some point, there might be abandonment. And we'd say, you know what, you were hired 10 years ago in this position, and it's just not quite working out. So I would, I would hope that there's an expectation that we do get to a really, and a goal, and that's a, maybe a collective conversation among the board, what our expectations are on human capital, but it's, when do we feel that all school leaders should be exceptional? It, you know, I would, you know, I'm a good leader, but I couldn't be put into a school.
So when, so when do we have a year when we don't have new school leaders coming up? Never.
Well, a part of that is we are, I have a lot of confidence in our, in the moves that we've made through our recruitment process, and that those are improving, and I've seen a lot of improvement for both teacher recruitment as well as leadership recruitment. But I wonder, and this kind of dovetails into another question that I'd ask, and this could be around school leadership or teachers. You know, we've got close to 20% of ones and twos in a year. In two years, where are we going to be? And what's the board's expectation? My expectation is that's probably less than 3% or 4%. I may be just way high in my expectation. I don't know if other folks think it should be 5% or 10% or 15%, but we talk about what our collective goals and expectations are. We've got 20% that are ineffective or highly ineffective. Right? That's a one and two.
Is that what the number is?
Yeah, 20%.
You regress, you regress when you take the class. Your scores, you don't grow a year, correct?
Well, and I want you to understand the measures that are there and how that might look. So you always have to dig deeper into a one or a two or a three to see what that exactly is, because there's three different ways, I mean, there's three pieces to the pie that gets you a composite score that might end up with a one or a two. 50% of that is observation. So if you're looking strictly at observation scores, that, you know, you may have a set of ones there, that those might be, or if you look at individual T-Boss scores, or then whatever their achievement level, all of those have an impact on what that overall thing is. So it's looking at each of three of those pieces, because they can be in various places. It's how that composite comes out. Personally, you know, I mean, the pie in the sky is, I don't want any ones or twos. But it's, the question more is, if you have a one or two, what actions are you taking? And how quickly are you? And we're saying, as soon as you notice.
Right.
And that's when you take action. And you, like you would with a student in the classroom that is struggling, you're going to find as many things as you can to support them. A teacher, you're going to find what you need to support them and to grow them, and if that is not working, then you have other options to take, and we need to have only the effective teachers in the classroom. If that's not working, then maybe this is not the place they need to be.
Can I add something?
Sure.
A couple things. So one thing that we wanted to look at is what is happening with our ones and twos, with our teachers who are receiving ones and twos? What's going on in their buildings? What's, what is their principal doing? What are we doing at the central office to support them? One thing that we will be looking more deeply at is our plans of assistance, which is our teacher plan of growth. If they're, if they're not hitting certain benchmarks, let's take a look at that, and let's work together to set certain goals and see if we can get there in a year, six months, whatever. We did take, we only have about 87, 88 teachers, I think, in the district right now who have plans of assistance, and so we want to start looking at the obviously negative persona that is with the plan of assistance and try to shift that a little bit so that we can talk more broadly about what we all need to do to grow. And, but we have 87 teachers on plans of assistance and a significantly more, greater number of teachers who are receiving ones and twos, and so we need to connect those dots a little bit better and help principals understand the importance of first reflecting on what a teacher needs and how to align his or her needs with their evaluation results. And that's part of what we'll be doing moving forward, but it hasn't been done yet.
Who owns, who owns the professional development? Who owns that process?
Well.
Go back to you.
Me and the academic officer, chief academic officer. And this is how it works. From the professional development standpoint, I provide the strategic focus, establishing the standards and how it's to be evaluated. The content of that professional development comes out of leadership and learning. And again, I go back to how important and critical it's been, that collaboration. And it's very mutually supportive, and we're working together on that. I, like, yesterday in our meetings, I was in on the leadership and learning meeting for that specific reason.
Lastly, I appreciate all your time this evening. You've got a very captive audience tonight. How can we support you? What do you need from the board?
Oh dear, we hadn't prepared for that question.
Right, and we're here, we want to support you.
I see a hand going up. I'll take it.
What do you need?
One thing I think that would be great that you alluded to earlier is for the board to set out some specific goals that you would like us to be hitting in terms of human capital. We're obviously setting those for ourselves, but we really would like to hear from you all in terms of, you know, our retention goals and our evaluation scores, and just thinking about the type of quality we want in our buildings. So helping us through that process would be good. Again, we are doing that on our own, but hearing your point of view would be great.
Be careful what you ask for.
And I guess. I hear you.
Are you hearing much of that from Dr. Register?
Oh, absolutely.
So he's, right, I mean, the staff has been setting goals, and we can have broadly a conversation with him around our expectations.
Oh, sure.
Anything else that we can do for you?
Well, let us get back to you on that one.
I have one more thing. Sorry. And follow us on Twitter. But also, do spread the word.
Give us your Twitter name, real quick.
At MMPTalent. And also, I really do think that the work around strategic recruitment over the last year under Shereen's leadership has been outstanding. I mean, she's absolutely reflecting best practice nationwide, and I think that we'll begin to see those benefits pay off in this next recruiting cycle. So just kind of keep that in your, in your thoughts as we, as we speak about the district, so.
Thank you. Mr., well, we won't, we'll be very cool. Go ahead, Will, knock them out.
Thank you, Cheryl.
You're welcome.
So my apologies for coming in just a little bit late. I'm going to have to review the game tapes and see what I missed, but, so, and I say this to say, I'm sorry if I'm covering ground that's already been covered, but I have just one observation and then two questions. So the people on this side of the table, you know, we come from all walks of life. A third are educators, all of them actually sitting right next to each other, and then the rest of us are not. But I think the one thing that we share in common is that we've had to, you know, go out around this community and ask people for their support. Parents and voters and others who have placed their trust in us to help steward the system. And the one thing that I found that resonated people, kind of being, resonated with people being out in the field is, you know, there's a lot of skepticism in the public about how fast things can change and how fast things can improve. And it's a common event to knock on a door and have somebody say, well, why do you think things can get better faster? And the one thing that I found that really did resonate with people is to just sort of talk about the system as a whole and say, look, you know, if you think of it as a system of 81,000 kids, it does feel really, really big, and it is. But if you also think of it as a system of 5,500 plus or minus teachers, you know, that's narrowing the scope a little bit in terms of how you approach the work. But if you also think of it as a system of 144 principals, you can get those people in the same room, and you can really start to move things that way. And I just say that to say, that resonates with people. That gets people's heads nodding, and I think just to piggyback on Mr. Hayes's comments on leadership, I think, it sounds trite, but I think leadership matters, and I think people expect and understand that if we really are focusing on that level of the system, that that's a big opportunity to move things across, move improvement faster. So I just would leave you with that thought in terms of how we approach the public confidence, you know, side of this work. The two questions I've got, and again, my apologies if you've covered it already, is, what does our teaching corps look like in terms of the number of mid-career, early-career, late-career professionals? And the reason I'm asking the question is, I know there are some school systems around the country who are facing retirement bubbles. Is there anything happening there that we need to be aware of? There it is. Okay. So any concerns there in terms of, you know, what that means for recruitment in the future?
Do you want?
And was this covered already?
A little bit, but we can.
We talked about it, not necessarily. We have about, what, 600 a year come in? Did you want to speak to it since, yeah, we'll let the head speaker do it.
I would say the biggest concern is about educators who are in the STEM fields retiring. So we've really ramped up our recruitment around those areas, because we've seen this year, we sent a forecast form to our principals to see what they'd heard in their buildings so far about, you know, projected retirements and so on and so forth. And a lot of those were math and science, et cetera. So that helped inform our recruitment plan.
Okay, great. And then the only other question that I had was, and I imagine this is in the deck somewhere, where are our teachers coming from in terms of colleges of education and prep programs?
They're good.
Thank you. Thanks, though.
Yeah.
That was last. Yeah, this is just last year's data, but.
So, you know, my question is, is this, and again, if you've addressed it already, my apologies for being duplicative, but in any, anytime, you know, we're a major purchaser of teacher, teaching talent from some of these schools of education, and in any time a major purchaser goes into the market, I think they have an opportunity to tell suppliers, you know, kind of what our expectations are and kind of what we want you to do in order to deliver top quality to us. And I'm sure everybody's doing great work, but is there kind of an active communication and feedback loop between us and the colleges of education that we're hiring from to let them know, you know, here's, you know, what's working, here's what's not, here's what we would like for you to do better in the future, you know, and kind of demand, you know, excellence?
Absolutely, yeah, exactly. We reestablished the Metropolitan Council for Teacher Education, or MCTE, this past fall, and we're meeting with the teacher preparation programs to talk about our needs and the trends that we're seeing in our classrooms. One of the things that we did bring up to them is, again, the need for STEM and how we'd like to stay in state if possible, but we're having to go to other states to recruit in those areas because they're not producing enough effective teachers. We also talked to them about our need for EL. We brought in our chief academic officer and some, let's see, Dr. Steele, to come in and speak with them about their needs, so they could hear it from someone else besides us, and we've been having regular meetings with them.
And good feedback from them.
And great feedback. We're actually having a dean's forum coming up in a few weeks, where we'll bring in the deans of education to further continue this conversation.
And several of these universities have reached out to us and to form partnerships. I know with MTSU, they're really revamping their teacher education preparation program, and they had a convening meeting, and they asked several districts, we were one of them, to offer a couple people to come down and work with them, teachers, master teachers that we have, and looking at that program, we're doing that. We're in conversation with a great many of them. Either they have sought us out, or we've gone and sought them out, and looking at leadership programs as well as teacher prep programs, especially focused on urban education.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I do have several questions, and the first one pertains to that particular program at MTSU, the Ready to Teach Program that Katie, I would be interested. What does the timeline look like as to how effective that program will be? How quickly can they make that turn around so that they come out of orange and into the green?
So, that's a great question, and we actually talked with TBR and MTSU today. And we actually talked with TBR and MTSU today to discuss that program in more detail. And I got some interesting feedback on what it's going to be doing. It really does look like it's modeled after a program that's working nationally in terms of best practice, implementing a two semester residency program. They're restructuring all of their courses, focusing much more on residency, in the field practice as opposed to as much on pedagogy classes. And so it sounds promising. I can't answer, you know, how long it would take for the program to turn around. Obviously, that's going to be up to MTSU leadership. But I will say that Shereen was just reminding me, the Tennessee Board of Regents has recently brought on a woman, Candy Hill Clark, who is helping to look more deeply at the preparation programs. And that's a very promising thing for TBR in general, but for us in particular, because we get a lot of our candidates from MTSU and TSU to TBR organizations. And so we have a lot of things to look forward to. We just don't know what the results are going to be quite yet.
So one of the interesting things that we have to think about is the whole concept of quality and what does the beginning of the pipeline look like? And Andy Hargreaves made an interesting observation that, I forget which country it was he was working with, that was roughly the equivalent of the size of the state of Tennessee in terms of number of students.
I think it was Singapore.
They have nine teacher preparation institutions. We have 44 in the state.
Exactly.
And so I think we have to set a higher standard for the students that are admitted into programs. That way we start recruiting higher quality people into the program. There's a real question about whether we have too many or not, you know, whether, what's the ACT entrance requirement to schools of education in the state? Is it 16? That's one, that's one thing I've heard about some of our Colleges of Education. So the quality end's really important. I think that's one of the places what the TFA does so well and really looking at that. But then the other thing that's important is this, 634 new hires last year. Those are first year, for the most part, first year, 22, 23-year-old young people who are starting a profession. And we cannot drop the ball once they come to work for us. And I think one thing that school systems typically have not done a good job of is developing that young beginning talent. And that's one of the other areas of focus that we have to really look at. How do we support that young talent that comes into us? How do we become the best place to work? You know, we will, I've said it before, we will not be the easiest place to work, but we can be the best place to work. And what that means to me is, we've got to support that talent coming in, so that they develop and don't quit and leave after six months or a year.
And that's a part of us looking at our induction program very strategically and very focused in on that, to make sure that we maintain them, keep them, retain them.
I do have one more question, and Katie, I think you addressed this as well. You said for the teachers that are hitting it out of the park, your words, you have developed incentives, but we're not trying to take them out of the classroom. We still want them to remain in the classroom. So what types of incentives then are we, you know, rebuilding for them so that they stay in the classroom?
That's a great question. And we're just beginning, we've, building off of the asset transformational leadership group work of the past couple of years, we're just beginning to start putting the teeth into the career pathways work. And I could also let my colleague Sheila talk about the compensation piece of that. But basically, we're looking at providing leadership opportunities within the building that keep teachers in the classroom, but also give them, you know, another realm of responsibility, whether it's collaborating with a leadership team on adjustments to the curriculum, or if it's providing, being the leader of a professional learning community or network, those types of roles. And they would get compensated in an additional amount based on that additional responsibility. So we're just starting to look at that. It's not in place right now, but it's at least a promising practice in terms of helping to retain those teachers, giving them someplace to go besides administration in their career journey, so.
Career development by expanding their scope of influence while they remain classroom teachers is really important. And it's very consistent with what we're doing with lead principals. We want our best principals to stay in schools and we want to expand their scope of influence, not to promote everybody out of the toughest job of being a principal.
And we've begun that thinking about looking at those master teachers, but also looking, and I will tell you that our Teacher Leadership Institute has provided tremendous feedback about retaining the three, four, five-year teacher. And this is our second year into that process. And the feedback that they've given us and the opportunities that they have been able to capitalize on within their buildings, with their campuses, with their principals, having their principals have an awareness of the things that they're learning and then being given some responsibilities, it keeps them interested, it keeps them, it gives them an opportunity to have input into the scope of work. And we're seeing very positive things from that. We're also looking at some of the IZOM schools are looking at some different pieces as well using the public impact work in how you utilize those master teachers as well. So we're at the beginning phases and again, some of Andy Hargreaves' stuff that he was talking about, Carrie Leana, was some fabulous information to help push that thinking and capitalizing on that as well.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Before I send it down to the educators, I'm going to ask my questions.
We can't wait.
Yeah, they're ready over here, I can tell you. I just have a couple of questions. And it's kind of, we'll start with Craig. You talked about the process going from paper to electronic.
Yes.
Now, my question is this, we talked a little bit about retention dates. How far back are you going to go as far as moving all of the records to an electronic process?
That's a good question. We're going to start with the current employees first. Obviously, we have approximately 11,000, maybe 12,000 current employees. That's a big piece that we've got to tackle first. And then we're going to look at, you know, how many employees that we can go back to from a retirement standpoint. Obviously, there's records in those retirees too that we need to keep, so that's also critical moving forward, so.
And depending on how far back in time we go, I'm kind of curious about data storage because that's a lot of information for a lot of employees. Are we equipped to handle the data storage right now? Do we have, and I am not IT, I'm just, I'm just going to make it sound like I know something. I'm just kind of curious because data storage is going to be very important. If we don't have the space to store these records, we could very eas, well, with the number of employees, we could very easily run out of storage space very quickly. So do we have the IT capacity to store these records? Are we going to be using an off-site facility to store these records? And if that question is, if the answer to that question is yes, then I'm concerned about security.
Right, right. From what I've heard from John Williams is we do have the capability right now and the capacity for all of our data storage.
Okay, okay.
Now, we're not just talking, I mean, we're talking also about student records too. So we have to have a lot of storage.
Exactly.
But we have the capability and the capacity right now.
Okay. And again, it goes back to, and I started thinking this process through and it goes back to depending on where the data is stored, how secure is it going to be? Because we're talking long range and a lot of files. So I just want to make sure that we are looking at a secure...
Fred wants to tell you.
Oh, here comes Fred.
There's a lot of work going into this right now, but the data will be stored on servers here in our secure server area. There'll be backup at a second location here in Nashville, but nowhere near this building that's a mirrored image backup of all of those files. Right now, we are currently doing student records. Our student record management system was still on MicroFish until this year. And we started back in October. All our new records are now going electronic. And we're going backwards as fast as we can to try to get those records electronic. And at the same time, parallel, we're starting this project to turn the file storage room downstairs into electronic. It will take us over a year to do that, including with temp employees and that sort of thing, but it's a move that we just don't have a choice but to do.
Okay, thank you very much. Another question regarding hiring, attracting great teachers and great leaders. We talked about the talent strategy. And when I looked at the numbers, I believe it was 71% white, 22% African-American, and I can't remember what the other percentage was on that chart. I'd be really curious to know what the ratio is male to female. Also, what, if any, diversity plans do we have currently in place for attracting a more diverse teacher population?
Yeah, so the question about the male to female population, so it's roughly, it definitely is more women. I think it's somewhere around 65, 35 in terms of women to men. It's not abysmal, but it's definitely, we obviously would like more men in our buildings. So, and then the question about minority recruitment, yeah?
Well, that goes back to Dr. Register's point about who's entering education programs. If you look at trends across the nation, it's typically white females who enter the field of education. So our transitionally licensed teachers have been a great pool for us as far as diversity. So TFA, TNTP, they have really been helping us with our diversity numbers. In addition to that, we are still going to HBCUs, historically black colleges and universities, and HSIs, historically Hispanic-serving institutions to recruit, to try to drive those numbers also.
And you just, something just clicked when you said that. You said that the majority of the students entering programs are white females. Then that tells me we're not doing a good enough job at the high school level to get our kids into a teaching pathway.
Exactly, getting them interested. And then that's one of the projects that Katie and I have discussed, is starting a program here. You hear more about that in the future as we...
Yeah, okay. And one more question before I send it down to death row down there for you guys. Just kidding. Retention data. I know, Katie, you said that that is the one piece of data that you would really like to have more on. And something that Dr. Register said sort of made me think about this, when he said quality end. Quality end comes from understanding the data on the way out. So if we use the data, the exit strategies, you know, that data can be used to sort of hone our recruiting efforts for quality teachers and staff coming into the system. So I'd be really curious to know what specifically you need or if there's, first of all, let's start here. What do you do as far as exit strategies? If it's something that you could give me and like a quick answer, that's fine. If it's some detailed thing, we can always do that later.
We don't do a great job with our exit strategy. We don't right now ask why people are leaving. We kind of shovel them out the door, or they leave on their own, or sometimes we find out two weeks later that they've left. So there's really no consistent plan right now. We are talking about, and I think we will be implementing, an exit survey, which, you know, if we could even just get a 50% return rate on that, that would be fabulous data for us. Because we really don't know why our teachers are leaving and we just have anecdotal stories.
And one thing I want to say about that, as I said in an earlier slide, a lot of the functions of HR had been farmed out to other parts in the district and we're pulling those back in. And one thing that we've done is say that the beginning and the ending starts and ends with us. So we have designated liaisons, that that's your contact point from the campuses, from the schools. If I have an opening, I contact human capital. We walk you through the process. If I have a vacancy, I contact human capital so that we have that information so we can closer, more closely track that. In the past, that wasn't as clear, and so we're making that as crystal clear as we possibly can so that we can also start to get better data on that as well.
Okay, and one last question. You know, based on the recent organizational announcements, changes, and we are giving principals a little bit more autonomy, how are you going to be working directly with those executive principals in the schools to recruit the staff that they're looking for? Because I know our principals are going to be looking for specific types of people to come into their schools. How is your office going to work with those principals to make sure that they're getting the best quality staff or getting the staff that they're looking for?
Well, the people that I talked to you about, our liaisons with our schools, they're also working with Leadership and Learning in addressing those issues. We're meeting with them, you know, we're in constant collaboration with them because it's a critical piece and we've opened that up. Did you want something else to say about that?
The forecasting tool that we sent out this year to all the principals was our attempt at getting that information from them, seeing what they need. They told us, you know, okay, we think we're going to have growth in this area, we'll need five, six more EL teachers. So making sure that we have the people that they need.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. Deep breaths. Alisa, you're on.
Why is there...
Believe me, it's a compliment. We're just going to sit back and watch.
No, I've been, yes, working, they've been fantastic, renewing my many engagements on this topic through assets. So, actually, I don't have that much, given that you've already gotten a lot of it. And thank you for letting me engage. I mean, I'm very interested, like others have noted along the way, in the question of school leadership, for reasons that I won't repeat, but have already been said here. Although the piece around culture building, you know, talent recruiting, ongoing support, professional development, everything rolls up to one person ultimately, you know, at that school level. And all the comments made about what drives retention and the research around that, that's echoed also in my world as well, is that when people leave, it's because I wasn't happy with my school leader. I didn't feel I was getting developed. I didn't feel there were opportunities to learn and grow, you know? I wasn't offered an opportunity. I mean, it's just the same. It's just like the same reel that plays over and over. And so I am obsessed, you know, and it's a controllable, as Will noted, a controllable, like, it's like a bite you can actually chew on, you know? It's 140. And so my, I guess, I was curious to know, and I know that we're in the process of trying to gather all the data and bring everything more under our control, but in terms of the set of slides that were brought up, if we were to produce the equivalent of that for principals, like, how hard would that be?
Great question. So we actually tried to do that. We tried to produce both sets of data. We are having a little trouble getting all of the principal evaluation data. It was supposed to be entered into code, which is the state system that we're all using. But we are recognizing that not all of our principals are in there, and so we're seeing some scores that are staying at the school and we're not sure why. And we're working with LNL, they're very, they're the ones who brought the problem to us. And so we need to be doing a better job with our principals to make sure we know where the actual rating ends up. So that's number one, is we just, we need to get the better principal data. Number two, the numbers that we do have, we are taking a closer look at and we're working with LNL and we're definitely going to be working with our network leads who are going to be evaluating other principals moving forward to make sure, again, that we're all looking at the same set of criteria and norming across evaluators. But that just rolled out last year and there's definitely not, there hasn't been a concerted effort to make that norming process go at this point, and we're going to be moving into that because it's just essential, so.
Got it. And, you know, in terms of the actual evaluation, I have zero line of sight into the evaluation that's in fact used. Is that widely available?
Do you mean you need, you want the access to the rubric and the whole process?
Yeah, whatever the evaluation needs.
Yeah, the best place to go is the Department of Ed, their team, it's the team, just search for TEAM, Teacher Evaluation Tennessee, and it'll come up.
And in your professional opinion, if it's a state, is it state-driven then in terms of a standard rubric or standard, or did we develop it? I guess that's my...
For teachers or principals?
For principals.
Oh, for principals. So the principal evaluation process was developed by the State Board of Education in collaboration with districts, but it was definitely a state-driven process that we've adopted.
Yes, and just, and I'll miss the date a little bit, but one or two years before the teacher evaluation process, the team evaluation for teachers. And the SREB, Southern Regional Education Board, was heavily involved with the state of Tennessee in developing that principal observation evaluation form.
And it was adjusted...
I think it's pretty good, but, and based on conversations with the state a year or so ago... And... so ago, and I was on the team that developed, you know, I was one of the advisors that developed teacher evaluation system, was that the state felt like at that time that it was good enough that we didn't have to deal with it immediately, in terms of revising it or updating it. The concern we have is to make sure that we use it effectively, and that it's really as thorough and complete as it needs to be.
No, sorry, I was just going to add that it was adjusted when the team teacher model rolled out. They did add a component to the principal evaluation around the quality of feedback that they're providing to their teachers, and the correlation between school growth, I mean, student growth and observations.
That's fantastic. Yeah, because that's what my, the reason I asked was I was wondering what the alignment was, or lack of alignment, in terms of, for example, Susan, what you were talking about, in terms of our definition of transformational leader, and if we're really serious about, okay, are leaders exhibiting those traits? Presumably, that is, sits somewhere in an evaluation, so that we're, you know, there's total transparency, alignment across all parties about what we expect, we actually measure it, and, yeah, I didn't want to assume that that alignment exists already.
So, in terms of timeline, this year will be the first year that we've been able to look at that data, the comparison of teacher observation data and their student achievement data, and align that with principal evaluation. This is the first year that we'll be able to do that.
And the state has been monitoring that as well, and if they've seen a large misalignment in that, they have been sending, I guess they call them monitors, I'm sure it's an official term, that come out and work with the principal to see what they're, we're seeing, and that's also another function that we're looking at in building the skill set for that iterative reliability and talking about what they should see in that. But if you're talking about the transformational leadership piece, that's a part of the conversation that we're engaging in as far as hiring type questions around that, and being very clear upfront about that. And as an additional measure in looking at that, it's also a self-assessment tool to help drive their professional development as well.
Got it. So many questions, but I'm going to just, just one or two more, which is fewer than normally.
Please ask them.
One is just, you know, just as a manager myself, right, and I have a very small operation relative to what you all are trying to do, you know, the whole notion of the PDB, which I'm so glad, sorry, the Performance Dashboard that Craig spoke of, which I think is incredibly important, I would be a wreck without my daily dashboard. And not, and I think, you know, I'm reasonably intelligent, I want good things for my team, I have very good intentions, I want to execute well, but there's a lot going on around me. And principals, I think, are no different. And so, to the degree that it seems that we could support our principals with their input, and with, you know, obviously lots of collaboration, to create that, like, dashboard that helps them manage all of what we expect them to manage, maybe that already exists, but it's.
They have a dashboard that, and I think is a great one, as far as at school level around student information, and helps them drive that, that kind of conversation. We aren't there as far as their teachers, and we certainly aren't there as far as the teachers and principals, but that is certainly one of the big pieces of going electronic and bringing all this in under one umbrella, so we have, we have one place to go, like you said. And that's been a frustrating part for us in trying to look at the data, to find out where it all lives, and it all lives with us, but it's trying to pull it together. So, those dashboards are being developed and looked at. And we want to streamline our hiring process and our application process, making that a lot electronic, and talk to our data system and our school net, and we want all of those to talk to each other, so it lives in one place and we can find that. So, we're not there. We have the student data for principals, but as far, and we can get to the student data as well, and we have some of the other. Our teacher evaluation data, a lot of that depends upon the other achievement levels that they added, that 15%. When that information comes out, what they chose as a piece there depends upon when their evaluation can be completed. So, that's another process of looking, we gave them the whole scope to look at, we may want to glean that down and be more precise, these are the ones that you can choose, so that we can get the data in there, so we can look at that quicker.
As we're building out the dashboard and the components of the dashboard, I think it's absolutely essential to have principals as part of that conversation. I think that was a great point. I'd also love for you to send any examples of dashboards that you have found to be particularly helpful, because they're actually, you know, we've been looking at other districts, and there frankly are not a significant number of Human Capital district-level dashboards out there for us to model, so I would really appreciate that. I'll remind you.
Absolutely. Okay, I swear, just two more. One is actually an observation, it's just like so obvious, but I feel like it's so critical, like, when we think about really moving to A to Z. So, I don't know if I downloaded this to you yet, Dr. Register, but I was at Rose Park Middle, our score prize winner, a couple of weeks ago, and, you know, I was touring their data room, and the extraordinary level, I mean, it's not a surprise, first of all, that they won the score prize, based on my observation, but the data room was just really an impressive site. And it was so clear, and first of all, you walk in, it's vibrant, because there's tutors from Belmont, and there's teachers in there, and they're with students, and you can see that it's actually used. And frankly, I've been in a number of schools where the data room was a room that happened to have the word "data" attached to it, like, you couldn't tell, like, what was, you know, what was the purpose. And I was just, you could, every single child is up on the board, there's a visual, like, representation of how they're moving, incentives to make sure that we're really staying on top of each person, you know, and thinking about differentiated instruction. I mean, this is not like rocket science, it's just purposeful. And, yeah, so I'm like questioning, you know, the folks in that room, I'm questioning the principal, I want to know, like, first of all, is this like broadly known in the world? Like, how many people have toured this? Have you, I mean, like, this specific space and the exact approach, and how are we actually replicating that? So, that was one thought. But the other one's just, like, it's so clear, it's just about fidelity to a known working process. And I don't know how to, like, yeah, dashboards, like, go a whole, a long way, I think, to forcing ourselves to sort of confront what is or is not happening in the schools, but I have this consistent observation that, you know, at the end of the day, this stuff is actually quite straightforward. There is great best practice across the district, and the question is, will we manage ourselves? Will we hold ourselves to a very high bar in terms of executing it? And so, dashboards may not be the bullet, magic bullet, I'm sure it's not, you know, but it goes a long way. You know, it helps you at least, like, pinpoint, you know, what's happening, so you can actually figure out where to put the searchlight. But I just feel like I need to express this somehow, because I feel like this is so much part of, I think, the, like, change. And I don't know how to operationalize that across, you know, a broader, like, set of schools, but I just.
We're doing a lot of that right now in the district. We've gone to, we've moved from paper data walls to electronic data walls that you can print off and post, like you're talking about. And I know our IT people have done a lot with leadership and learning, and our principals and HR to really develop that. So, it's being institutionalized across the district as we speak, this year. We're pretty excited about it. Thanks for noticing that.
Oh, yeah, it was fantastic. I mean, the interesting thing, it was actually pretty low-tech. I mean, they had made it, it was like classic classroom management practice, you know, for those teachers, you know, just like putting stickers on the wall and moving, like, there's a sticker that represents Amy, and Amy actually makes progress down the board. I mean, this is, it sounds so, because it is simple, and it's so visual and visceral, and people are just excited. You can tell, like, I am ready to get the DEA. It was like the day before the DEA, and everyone's itching to get it, because they want to see the pieces of paper move down the board. And they want to see exactly, like, all of our interventions, did it work, you know, with Dr. Brand, Joanne? Or did it work with Will? Or, you know, and I think that kind, and that's all driven, I'm sure, by, you know, well, it is driven by surely the principal, but then also a lot of great leaders in that school. And so, the culture is just vibrant in terms of, so anyway, that's, yeah, it was just, it's an extraordinary thing to witness. And I've seen it several times, but it was just, yeah, in our, in my district in particular, but I just feel like, ah, can we replicate faster?
That's fabulous. I'm actually just thinking in terms of how we could replicate that from a district Human Capital point of view, like, could we, and of course we could, just represent each of our schools, or even smaller numbers than that, percentages of our faculty, and where they're moving in a visual way. I mean, that's very compelling. Have you seen that at a Human Capital level?
Rephrase one more, rephrase, like, in terms of.
In terms of our, yeah, back to Mr. Hayes's point.
Yes, 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 you can do that, yeah.
Yeah, it just sounds like, I mean, it would be something.
That's exactly right.
To walk into the Human Capital Division and see where we're moving our teachers.
That's exactly right, it's the same practice. Okay, I've gone way too far. I'm not going to ask.
This has been a great discussion tonight, guys, and thank you so much. I would only say that I wish that we had received this information earlier, because we've looked at a lot of information tonight, and you've presented a lot. And personally, I like to study things before I get here, so I kind of wish that we've had that opportunity. Looking at this slide, how much have we recruited for this year at these locations? For teachers.
Oh, we know how many.
Well, is it this present year?
This is our last year.
This is our last year.
Okay, then, yeah, whatever this is referring to, so if it's last year, what kind of recruitment did we do? I mean, it kind of breaks my heart that we had 50 teachers from MTSU, and those were the, that was the school that produced the poorest teachers.
But that doesn't mean our 50 are. So, I want to make that clear, that that's from the institution, that we have 50 from there, sorry. And so, that may be misleading. So, what we didn't dive into, and we could, I'm not sure how easy at this point in time it would be, but we could dive into those 50 to see where they are, that they may, you know, they may be highly, very highly effective. So, I want to make sure we make that that clear, that's based on the Higher Ed Commission, their report card.
Yeah, and I'll say it this way, I think MTSU is the greatest, the largest, produces the largest number of teachers in the state, more than any other institution. I'm pretty sure I'm right about that. So, we just got the best 50.
How much recruiting did we do?
And that's tongue-in-cheek, but we also, you know, we also have an interview and hiring process where I hope we did get the best 50 from MTSU, and so, but this data, this data, like, in this format, it's just been available this year for the first year. Is that correct? After the hiring process.
And the THEC data didn't come out until fall of 2012, so our recruitment season was over essentially when we received this. So, then when we did get the THEC data, it informed what we're doing this year.
And there was a THEC report from the year previous as well, but we didn't have Shereen on board to strategically look at it.
So, did you recruit at any of these locations?
Yes, yes, we did.
For this particular year?
This year, this, this.
After the data, after you received this, then you recruited, is that what you're saying?
This month, the recruiting that's going on today.
The recruiting's going on this month?
Yes.
Is informed by these results?
By the THEC.
But you've been recruiting in the past, haven't you? This is not the first time you've recruited, right?
No, no. But we're just being more strategic about where we're going.
Okay. I talked to a teacher that is very, a very strong teacher that graduated from Vanderbilt, and she said there was never any recruitment that she was aware of at Vanderbilt from Metro schools. There were from, you know, every place else, but.
I'm not, I'm not sure why that, I don't know, when did she graduate? Because last year, we were on campus.
It was, I think she said last year.
We spent an entire day on campus interviewing. We actually had two people on campus interviewing candidates. So, I'm not exactly sure, maybe she didn't get the communication from her community, her career center.
But you spend an entire day.
An entire day.
At universities that show high results.
Promise and results, yes.
Good. Then, there's another slide that shows the correlation between T-VAS and the observation scores.
That's state, you want state or?
No, Metro. And when we look at those teachers who received a five, and their T-VAS data was pretty strong, yet they, their evaluation was not as strong.
Their observation.
Their observation evaluation. And I know that I've heard teachers talk about that, and there was a sense, maybe from the state at some point, for principals not to give fives. And I know fives kind of indicate that, you know, you can't get any better. So, I see that there's, you know, some resistance to giving a five, but it's interesting to me that, that our data, our T-VAS data actually looks better there, and more indicative than the principal observation. Would you agree with that?
I would. I think the bigger story is in fact around the ones, that we have so few teachers receiving a one on their observations, and yet 20% are receiving a one on T-VAS. So, that's where we're going to start placing more of our effort. Obviously, we want, we want the numbers to be fairly similar, never identical, but closer than they are at this point, and we'll be looking at the people receiving fives, but we're going to start with the ones, for sure.
And the ones and twos that are receiving plans of assistance? I think you said there were 70 of those, or about 70?
There are 87 educators with plans of assistance, but they're not all ones and twos. They range from one to four, so that we have some educators with a four composite rating on a plan of assistance.
So, are the plans of assistance mostly for the ones and twos, or maybe most important?
Historically, the plan of assistance has been for a low-performing or a struggling educator to help build their capacity and get, move them up the rating categories. We are talking about a different approach to plans of assistance. Do you want to speak to that?
With the plans of assistance, it's something that targets it, if it's low-performing on observation score or something, then there needs to be something put into place to grow that. But what we really want to think about is, and I wish they called them plans of improvement, and every single person would be on a plan of improvement, because it has a negative connotation, we can all improve, and we can all get better. So, and a part of that is setting your own goals about what you want to see and what you want to do. You know what the rubric is already, you know what's expected, you know where your strengths are, and that's a part of our artisan teacher and all those types of things, and move that forward. But it's also, if we don't have that, and if we see that, then we need to sit down, we, the leader, and, or the person observing with the teacher, and put those in place so that we can make the gains and the improvement that we need to make, and as quickly as we possibly can, so we can make the appropriate decisions at the, at the end of that contract year.
Yes. How many ones and twos do not have a plan of assistance at this point?
A significant number. I would say probably 1,000 at least. Is that, would that be about right?
We're about 20%, and you've got about 6,500 teachers, and you've had 89 with, and now all of those are ones and twos.
Exactly.
About 1,100.
Yeah. Good job, that was impressive.
I was going through the math.
Yeah.
Who is responsible for writing the plans of assistance?
Principals in collaboration with the teachers who are on them.
And it's almost March.
Yes. Yeah, this is, obviously, this was a red flag, this was a red flag that we became aware of this month.
Yes. How quickly can this be rectified this year? Can it be rectified this year? Can we get plans of assistance, or even, you know, I hate to see us go, I think we all feel a sense of urgency, that we have got to, I mean, I know that I want to see this school district the best, not only in the state, but in the country. And, you know, we have to work at that every day, we have to demand it, we have to, you know, all of us work together to get that, and that's, that's a problem if we've got 1,000 teachers that are at ones and twos, and they don't even have a direction possibly. I mean, I hope that's not true, but that's what it indicates.
I don't know if that part is true. I know that we don't have written plans of assistance. So, I will tell you from a Human Capital perspective what that means for us. It's about documentation, it's about the support, it's about the development to do those. I have yet to be at a principals' meeting. I have yet to be at a principals' meeting or any gathering with principals when Dr. Register or any of the leadership and learning people have been there, that we have not had a conversation around plans of assistance about impressing upon them how important that is. A part of our day-to-day is looking at that and looking at those areas and going to, with leadership and learning, sitting down with the executive principals, sitting down with those principals and saying, here, is it a training issue? Do you not know how to do it? What kind of documentation do you need? Those types of things. We have great training around how to do appropriate documentation. So it's all of those issues, and we're constantly, constantly bringing that forward and saying, that's what has to happen, so.
Building a culture, and also focusing on building a culture where it's okay to do it.
Yeah, and I think it should be noted that really the kind, the strategy of a specific plan of assistance is new. Now, I think there have been other approaches and other names to that, but we've just focused on this, not just in the last year. Am I right on my timeline on that?
This is a new system.
Is that right?
We have had them for a while, but-
But we've changed, changed names.
But we've definitely adjusted the approach.
Yeah.
But I think there's a more structured evaluation system to back it up, to give more data, and it's the first year of full implementation into that, to really look at that, to see. And there's some growing pains, if you will, in how to use that and use that language to write good, sound plans of assistance, so.
Can I ask one question? And I hate to interject here, but I'm curious, does the lack of having a plan of assistance for these teachers truly indicate that they don't have a direction? I would think that if they're in that, in that classroom, in that school building, that the executive principals, even though they don't have a piece of paper that indicates this is where you are and this is where I need you to be, I can't, I can't get my mind around the fact that they don't know where they should be going. There's some, there should be some sort of verbal conversation going on with these teachers that would indicate to them, this is where you're going, even if it means we just have not had an opportunity to sit down and put it, pen to paper and, and write some sort of formal documentation. I don't want there to be some, some thought process or some thought here that, you know, a plan of assistance means that there is no direction. I highly believe that that would be completely incorrect.
You'd be right. I mean, there's, obviously, there are, I feel very confident in all the conversations I've heard from principals, and it may be that we don't have that documentation, that piece of paper, that plan of assistance, but I know that there are conversations with them, based on their observations and those pieces, I hear from teachers, I hear from principals, not all 5,000, 6,000 are pretty, quite a few of the principals.
Well, but one thing is true for all 5,000 or 6,000 of them, and that's that they're all being evaluated this year.
Absolutely, exactly.
And in the past, that's been once every five years, the state requirement, up until this change, so, so I think you're exactly right. Every teacher is observed as pre and post conference, pre and post conference evaluation, pre and post observation evaluation conferences, and a summative at the end of the year, so there is a process that's in place now for every teacher, every year, that didn't exist before, and that's the state law change.
Right.
And so it's a huge change, a huge movement there. The plan of assistance is a specific strategy, I don't know if it's right to say this or not, a sort of a last step. And I think what will happen, and it's a, it's a strategy that we formalized just in the last year, more formalized, and that we're really, that we're really using now, and I think you'll see the number of people on a plan of assistance go up. But put in perspective that this year, this last year, for the first time, everybody got evaluated, and everybody had their test scores looked at, their student achievement scores looked at, if they had them, that's a huge change for us in terms of culture change, is a real culture change.
It's a culture change, it's changing all the conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So a plan of action is actually not required?
No.
Plan of assistance.
I'm sorry, plan of assistance.
I like plan of-
Should it be? I like it, too. I like it in action better.
No, it's, it's not required. It was a flag to us that there were so few plans of assistance in the, in the district, simply because we know that we have more than 87 teachers probably who need to be on one and who need to be receiving intensive supports, or need to be exited from the, from the district, so.
Let me ask you this, we've, we've got pockets, as we've talked about, of outstanding teaching in our district. What are the avenues for a teacher who is possibly on a plan of action, or even a level three teacher, to go to some of these outstanding classrooms and observe the best teachers in action?
Many of our principals do that right now, and they-
Principals, what do you mean?
Many principals have teachers do that, and have them visit other classrooms, I think that's what you're saying, what opportunities they have.
In that school or another school even?
Absolutely, that's what they do, and they're, we're doing, there's the model classrooms that we have. So that is a strategy for principals to use with teachers, and teachers for, to request that, that, that's alive and living.
A lot of our school-based coaches model teach. That's very important, it's the whole concept of networking and being collaborative rather than working in isolation. So it's really the movement, it's culture we're trying to create across the district.
Right. And how many of you guys went to the Emerging Knowledge Forum? Everybody here go to that? One of the things I was so impressed about with Handy Hargraves was, he talked about how important inspiration is. And he said that Martin Luther King and President Obama, neither of them had a strategic plan, but they both had inspiration. And he talked about how important it is to have that in our classroom, and to have continuous excitement and conversation and, you know, for this to, I think of Libby Meredith and her enthusiasm about what day schools started, you know, and every place she went, she was talking about what day schools started, August 1st. And I think that's the kind, I think that's what we need. We need an inspiration that, I think, I think we get bogged down in so much testing and, and different kinds of issues that we don't have inspiration. And because you were there, have you thought about this? Have you guys talked about it? And if so, have you, would you like to share some of that with us?
I loved that quote, by the way, that, that really struck home, you know, that Martin Luther King didn't move the nation by a strategic plan.
Yes.
Because I love strategic plans, so it was really, really hit home with me in particular, because I'm very organized, I like the structure of it all. We've actually talked about that quite a bit in terms of the way that we're thinking about recruitment, and that really, what type of competencies, what type of characteristics are we looking for in the educators that we want in our buildings? And give me a teacher with initiative and go-gettedness and determination to make a difference, and I don't, I don't really need to look at a lot of other things. And so we've talked about how to get at that when we're interviewing for new candidates, and how we're going to be putting a selection process in place that will really start getting at those competencies, those underlying things that, that make a strong leader or a strong go-getter stand out. And we all know what they are, you know, in theory, but how can we start identifying them? And TFA's done such a great job at this, frankly, in terms of their recruiting, we're going to try to start modeling some of that for ours. So I, I'm all over that, we're, again, not there yet, but moving towards that.
Thank you, thank you all for, for your time today, and if you would, I would love to have a copy of, of your presentation.
I think Vish has it.
Vish will say it.
Okay. She loaded it up.
Joanne?
Thanks. I had a few questions. One is about the strategic compensation. And I wondered if you were going to, I know that you said you're in early stages, but are your plans to develop a rubric of some kind to honor those teachers that deserve such compensation?
We are looking at a lot of things right now. And again, this is very early in this whole stage, but we did secure DIA grant to look into role differentiation, and what does that need to look like? So while I've only owned that for about two months now, so it's really, really early, but we're starting to, to reach out across the nation to different school districts that have done something like this, to say, tell me what you learned, what worked, what didn't, and then somehow through all of that, pull it all together and say, okay, here's the components that worked, here's the ones that didn't, and here's why. All right, what sounds like it could possibly work in our culture? And then we start, that's a place to start the conversation. And we have already been out talking with different teachers and communicating this amongst the asset group, et cetera, to try to start saying, what is it that we need to be looking at that's meaningful to you guys? So we're, again, we're very early in this process, but that's going to be exciting. Wonder what it's going to look like? I don't know yet, but I'll tell you what, you won't be able to hush me up once I figure it out.
Okay. I was wondering if there are several teachers who are considered number ones on the teacher evaluation system, that are teachers of art, music, and physical education. And I wondered if there was a link to those scores because they don't have data.
So that's a great, a great question. So almost 70%, I think, roughly 70% of our educators do not have individual teacher affect data from T-VAS, so they're teaching in subjects that are not tested by the state. Those 70% use, as their 35% metric for the evaluation, the school-wide T-VAS scores, so they're actually reflecting what the tested subjects and grades are performing as a whole. There's, there were a lot of discussions about that when the evaluation system was being developed, but no state has mastered the, the idea around figuring out how to measure growth in all subjects and grades yet. There are lots of different options out there, and the way that Tennessee approached it is that we chose to go with the school-wide value-added measure. There's discussions that we can have about whether that's the appropriate way to go, but, but that is where we are now.
I also wondered what kinds of steps you're using for teacher orientation or planning for orientation? What does an orientation look like from your perspective?
Well, either one or all three of us, do you want to go ahead?
You start.
We, we're doing two weeks, or we're doing it two different times this summer, we've done it once before, we've extended what we're looking like, looking at it, and next week I'm meeting with Dr. Wyman, who's really helping support that, he's worked with Craig in the past on doing that, and Katie will be coming in on the conversation as well. We really want, and we're also getting feedback from LNL as well, because we want to make sure that our orientation is more than paperwork and those types of things, that it's the first step into building that culture and getting them on the right, right steps. So in conversations with Dr. Wyman, we're, we're revamping what we're doing on that, and I think it's improved over the last few years, and it's only going to get better.
We specifically, our high-zone schools, and Alan's back there, and I can't remember the time on this, but we've had a longer period of time for, in some schools, a longer orientation. Alan, what, you might, you might speak, like a week or two weeks orientation in some of the high-zone schools?
In the 10 schools, it varies from a week to three weeks, actually, and we'll have a standard, probably 10 days in most of those schools this summer.
So it's pretty important as we do, as we move into things like Common Core, to do, to make sure that we have good orientation before we ever get started in a school year on those substantive instructional approaches like Common Core. I think that's a really good, good one.
And I just want to add to that as well, orientation is, is critical and, and helps us kind of kick off the, the year in a very smart way, but a bigger piece of what we want, really want to do is the whole induction piece throughout the first, hopefully, first two years of a teacher's tenure in our, in our buildings. And that piece has, has been implemented at the building level very differently, depending on a principal and his or her take on induction, and we're going to try to make it a little bit more streamlined and a little bit, obviously reflecting best practice in terms of mentoring and modeling those teachers who are veterans in the building who can help newborns. Newborns?
They are like newborns. I would think that, yes, I would think that some type of orientation at mid-year might be helpful as well, because you have a lot of turnover for various reasons. And so sometimes teachers, the information that was so broad at the beginning of the school year gets a left dog.
We actually backed up one of our orientations, our induction periods, earlier in the summertime to capture some of those, because we ran out of room and physical space to have it. So that's why we have now two sessions, and we're timing it closer around the start of school, but we already are starting to look to about an induction mid-year for all those new teachers that are coming through. Either they're an interim teacher, or else they're a late hire for whatever obvious reasons, so.
You know, many times those teachers come in and they get the smallest rooms, or the classes are, are very different than they were at the beginning of the school year, they're taking over for beloved teachers, and all of those kinds of things, so they would need support at that point. Under what department does employee relations, okay, that's all right.
Is that all you wanted?
That's all I wanted.
Do we have any other questions, hot burning questions on the table? Ms. Frome?
I know, I've already had a turn, so.
Well, you only have one question, so I know that you haven't had a time.
Okay, well, I was just thinking about a lot of things, I think it's a great conversation, and I forgot, I forget to thank you guys for what you're doing, because I am very excited that this is really being approached systematically, I think everything you've talked about is really exciting for our district. I just, one thing I was going to mention, since we've kind of morphed into the evaluation topic, is about the impact of evaluations on, evaluation, teacher evaluations on retention. And, because I think the retention piece is really important, obviously the recruiting, but we really want to make sure we're keeping our good teachers, and sort of my anecdotal experience is that we're, we're kind of losing some people who are frustrated with, you know, the assessments, evaluations, evaluations, all that. And I was thinking about, you know, how, like, one thing that's been on my mind lately is, you know, the achievement versus growth, and achievement is based so much on basically poverty, there's this high correlation between poverty and achievement, and having that piece be a big part of the teacher evaluation, and that it's a state-driven, so, you know, this is something I think we need to be talking about and thinking about. And, and then also, you know, as Joanne mentioned, just having, some teachers are evaluated on the, the performance of the school as a whole, and are we, and bringing in those sorts of measures that they can't control, are we discouraging, you know, the teachers that are working with the most difficult populations? You know, we want those teachers to stay, especially the good ones. So I just think we need to be, I don't know, maybe you guys could speak to that, you know, how that came into play. I don't know what the best measures are of teachers, you know, we, growth, obviously, we're looking at in the, in the, the observation, but then, you know, having the achievement in there seems a little unfair, or having the performance of the school as a whole seems a little unfair, I don't know. Do you have any comments on that?
Katie and I have both worked with that before, and I think, I think it is a controversial issue, I know a lot of, some stuff wide basis, there's a lot of concern about using schoolwide data. I think it, it sort of points out some of the weakness in the evaluation system. When you start trying to tie, when you start trying to tie teacher evaluation to student achievement, that's a reach that hasn't been, that hasn't been, that's a gap that hasn't been thoroughly, effectively bridged yet. I think that is the weakness in the system right now. And so, so I think we have to continue to try to bridge that, and, and as I said to our commissioner yesterday in a meeting, that's an area where we have to build teacher trust. And I think that's very important, that we continue to work on that and build a greater level of trust, that teachers know that it's a good, it's a good assessment system, and there is a valid link between their performance and student achievement. Katie, you might put, you're, you're involved in facilitating the development of that plan, so you might put a little different spin on it, but that's my take on it right now. But that's my take on it right now.
I, I mean, frankly, we were the first state in the nation behind Delaware to, or the second state in the nation behind Delaware to, to implement a evaluation system based on student, student achievement. And so, at the time, there just wasn't a lot of, there weren't a lot of options out there to really measure growth, and of course, Race to the Top drove the, the discussion at the beginning. I, I do, other states have chosen different paths where they've developed student learning objectives in collaboration with their teachers and have the teacher voice much more integrated into that piece. I know that the state has, has looked at the evaluation, and, and I'm sure that they're having discussions around whether it should stay the way it is or, or whether it should be modified. But at, at this time, I mean, obviously, we're just following state mandate and, and definitely want to build a better culture around the, the purpose of the evaluation as a whole and providing, using it as a really effective tool as opposed to.
So, my, my bigger view of the teacher evaluation system is this. The, the, what's to gain, to be gained from this huge effort in this state are conversations about improving practice and focusing on best practice and the constructive conversations between principals and other evaluators and classroom teachers and creating networks of conversations. If we have invested this much time and energy just to fire bad teachers, that's a terrible misuse of resources. We've got to use it to improve practice. We've got to use this system to improve practice. And I think, and that's where the great majority of our teachers are. We don't, the great majority of our teachers do good work. And so, what we've got to do is help them get better. And I think this evaluation process has to be a vehicle for doing that, and we have to be able to deal with inadequate performance as a part of it. But a great concern is gaining, gaining a higher level of teacher trust and more constructive conversation around improving their practice. And when we do that, then I think we're at the top of the list.
Joanne? Oh, I just wanted to thank everyone for their part in improving our teaching staff and human capital. And I wanted to mention the fact that Susan and Earl had been at the Council of Great City Schools making presentations along these lines early on, so we're glad to have you with us.
Thank you.
I think Will had another question.
Yeah, just, pardon me. I had just, just one comment on, on teacher evaluation. You know, we, there's lots of things that we agree and disagree over in this room and, and with our partners at the state, depending on any given policy. But the one thing I think everybody has kind of come to universal agreement on is the evaluation system is a work in progress.
True.
At the state level, this work is happening nationally. And so, I just say that to say, you know, this is among the many things. If we can somehow do this, do this right and, and build teacher trust in this system, we can inform the state and the country. And so, I think it's an opportunity. And I want to thank you guys also for the information tonight.
Thank you.
Very interesting.
I'm a little bit ashamed, man, I forgot my manners, but I was so anxious to ask my questions, but I really do thank y'all for a very good report. It's something that we've wanted for a long time, and the information was very substantial, and I appreciate all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think so many new staff members, so welcome to our neighborhood.
Nothing like trial by fire.
Love it.
Yeah, exactly. So, again, I will echo my colleagues' thank yous. It has been a tremendous work session, and there's nothing, when you can walk away and you actually have valuable information, it's time well spent. So, we thank you all for being here tonight, and we do appreciate that. Any other comments before we go to announcements? We'll start with Joanne. Ms. Mary?
I've got three. I want to give a shout out to Dan Mills Elementary School. They have, in the first hundred days of school, they have raised ten thousand dollars to put a smart technology in their second, all of their second-grade classrooms. And they did that not by selling candy, as we traditionally do, but they did it by allowing the parents to come up with ways to, to raise money, like cookie sales, T-shirt sales, that kind of thing. So, that all of the money, most of the money, the majority of the money went to the school rather than a candy company. So, also, I wanted to talk just a little bit about Homework Hotline. We received some data from them that's very impressive in the first six months of school, well, from August to February. They've, they've received quite a few calls, and the average call has been about twenty-three minutes. Ninety-two percent of the students who called in, or parents who called in, finished their assignments. Sixty-one percent passed the post-test on the new concept. Over twenty-four hundred calls were from children who speak a language other than English at home. And over twenty-three hundred calls were made from parents or parents and students together, which is, I think is wonderful. Most students called to get help with math and then the second one was reading. Let's see. And, you know, I, I would like to see this kind of data compiled through our customer service center. I think this is wonderful data that really shows us that this is a program that's working. And last Monday, I had the opportunity to, of course, our students were off in metro schools, and our teachers were involved in a professional development day. And I was able to be involved in the one at Hunter's Lane Cluster Conference. There were sixty-eight presenters from District Three. Each, each of the participants got to do three presentations to attend. And it was a very productive day, and I want to thank all the people who, who worked with that, not only the folks at Hunter's Lane, but also the central office staff.
Thank you.
Melissa?
Many of our viewing audience, Mary, and I know this is Read Me Week, so I get the opportunity. It's very fun. This is one of my favorite weeks of the year. And so, I'm, I'm reading at several different events this week, and it's always very rewarding for me, more so than probably anybody else. And I would like to remind my colleagues that this Friday morning at seven o'clock a.m., we'll have a Youth Safety Summit meeting at Martin Center, and we're two months out from this event, so we need to hit the ground running. So, I remind y'all to be there. It's Dr. Register's favorite time of the day.
I had the privilege, a week or so ago, of speaking to the Creve Wood United Methodist Church Men's Club. I want to thank Ken Pinkston for the invitation to be there. Ken is not any relation to me, so it's a different Pinkston, although I'm sure we've got a Scottish, a Scottish ancestor somewhere down the line. But, but one of the things that I just want to reflect on for a minute was I got to, at that, as part of that men's club, one member of that men's club is Charles Frazier, who was the director of schools in the eighties and who was on the State Board of Education in the nineties. And I got to have breakfast with Mr. Frazier, and just kind of reminds me that everything we do is, we're standing on the shoulders of lots of people who came before us, so just wanted to, to recognize that and, and reflect for a second. The second is, thing is, earlier, excuse me, late last week, I visited my alma mater, Overton High School, and I sat in and got to observe a science class taught by Adam Taylor, who's using social media to teach science, and talk about engagement levels of children going up when they get to interact and learn that way. You could see it in their eyes and in their fingers, and, and those kids were on it. So, I just want to tell some of the Bobcat alums from my era, Jason Holloman, Kenny Byrd, Ken Whitehouse, these kids are on the move. They're coming for us, and they're doing great work. So, so go Bobcats.
Along the lines of Read Me Week, which we're having at our school, too. Dr. Register and I participated in a book'em event at Charlotte Park Elementary last week, which was really a lot of fun. I've been impressed with the school culture there and how well this event was organized and what a lot of fun it was for the kids. And they all had hats on with a vocabulary word they had selected, and, and we, we, each classroom got a special reader, and so Dr. Register and I had to compete against Miss Tennessee and a crown. And someone with a dog.
Titans cheerleader.
Yeah, Titans cheerleader, former Titans player. So, we were not the most popular reader, but we had a lot of fun. And just enjoyed it, and enjoyed what the school was doing.
I had a, I had a similar experience at Glengarry Elementary School. I was between an FBI agent and a Titans cheerleader. And try explaining to a group of elementary schools, uh, schools on career day what it means to be a school board member. It's tough.
I will, I only have one announcement to make, and I'll tell you, I'll read it rather than trying to remember it. On this Thursday, beginning at six p.m., the Antioch High School Community Arts Exhibition will open. The grand opening of the First Annual Frist Antioch Community Exhibition Face, developed by Antioch High School students within the Academy of Teaching and Service, with contributions from community members and with the assistance of faculty and staff members from the Fris Center for the Visual Arts, who is also an academy partner at Antioch High School. Again, the grand opening event will be from six to eight p.m. on February twenty-eighth. Regular viewing hours will be March fourth through the fourteenth, from five p.m. to seven p.m. Saturday, ten a.m. to, till noon. It will be held at the Crossings Events Center on Hickory Hollow Parkway. And I want to read this purpose, because I think it's relative to this exhibit. The why: To create a rich, project-based learning experience for Antioch students, providing them with real-world problem-solving scenarios that require the use of inquiry, collaboration, and creative thinking. The exhibition will highlight the talents of local artists within the Antioch community while exploring the theme of identity. I've sort of been briefed a little bit on this exhibit, so if you can go by, I think it'll be fantastic. The opening, again, is going to be this Friday from six to eight. If you can make it to that, it would be fantastic. Come out and support these high school students. I think they're doing a fantastic job. Other than that?
Overton Academy Tools will be on Monday at eleven fifteen.
Okay. Any other announcements? Ms. Frowe?
This meeting's adjourned.